Danny Wiley.
Present.
Charlie Ramirez. Jonathan Laraga. Romeo Robles.
Present.
Rafael Mungia.
Present.
Luis Madrigal.
Present.
Andy Castro.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, I make a motion to excuse effin' tease. All second, that term. All those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed and signed, okay, the motion carries. Next item is public testimony. Anyone signed up for public testimony?
Yes, sir, we have one individual sign up, Josefa Mata.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josefa Mata, and I live at two 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 West M Houston. The property which is directly north of the of the, of item five D. My sister Maria Elena Mata is the owner of the property. We have lived there about fifty years. Over the last fifty years, of course, we've seen the neighborhood change. But it seems like in the last twenty years, it has changed probably for the worse. Seventy-five percent of the neighborhood is now rental property. And over the years, we've seen the, the neighborhood go down in permanent residents. So people don't own their homes, they rent them. So one of the key factors to a good quality of a life for a city is to have home ownership. And I would like to see not only the council, but this commission, encourage home ownership. We've also seen the central part of Kelly and the western part of Kelly also have an immense amount of rental properties. It's gone on for about unchecked for the last twenty years. Also, the, in that Sam Houston area, as you know, it is prob, it is a clear thoroughway to the highway. And in that area, the traffic is very heavy. The city has taken about six feet of our yard to expand the road, which is understandable. But yearly, you, we have about two accidents that occur from Blue Bonnet to Sam Houston. Blue Bonnet heading south where it hits intersects Sam Houston. And daily, we hear screeching and honking. That is a very dangerous intersection. So this development will exacerbate the traffic. It's very difficult to get out of, to leave personal property and enter into the street. So the other problem that we have is the noise. There is a lot of noise. You can check the records with the police department. At least twice a month, we're calling the police to talk to residents about lowering their music. It's just, it, the density is, just creates too much noise. So I would like to suggest that maybe the city can buy the property at cost.
Your time is up, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Community garden.
Thank you. Any other public testimony?
That, that's the only person who signed up, sir.
The next item is approval of the minutes of April the twelfth, twenty twenty-one. On those minutes, I'd like to amend them for Mr. Madrigal, that he was present but could not participate. So I guess we put him as not being present. He couldn't vote, we couldn't hear him, he couldn't hear us.
To amend the minutes? Okay.
Okay. Do we need a second this, or just?
Yes, chairman, I, I agree with your proposal.
Okay. Second. We need a vote on it, or just? Okay, all those in favor, changing the minutes? Say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All aye. All those opposed? Same sign? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next item is a public hearing.
Good evening. My name is Anaisa Listerio, Planner One for the City of Far. Tonight, we have two items for your representation. Items one through three will remain tabled. Item number four. Melton and Hunt Inc., representing FH Investments LTD owner, has filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission a request for a change of zone from general business District C and residential multi-mobile home District RMH to heavy commercial District HC in order to develop and construct a tractor supply company. The subject site, which is located on the east side of South Cage Boulevard and physically located within the sixty-eight hundred block of South Cage Boulevard. The property is legally described as being three point four, three five acre tract of land, more or less out of Lot three seventeen, Kelly Forest subdivision, Far Idalgo County, Texas. The property fronts South Cage Boulevard, one hundred twenty to one fifty principal interior that runs north and south with a posted speed limit of forty to fifty-five miles per hour as identified in the City of Far's Therafair Plan. The property is currently zoned General Business District C and Residential Mobile Home District RMH. The property and the property to the east and south were zoned to agricultural and or open space District AO when they were annexed by the City of Far on November eighteen, nineteen eighty-six. The properties to the west were zoned to agriculture and or open space District AO when it was annexed by the City of Far on December sixteen, nineteen eighty-six. Later, the properties to the west were rezoned to General Business District C on March thirty, nineteen eighty-two, when the city adopted the current zoning ordinance we use today. On September fifth, nineteen eighty-nine, the property to the north was zoned to agriculture and or open space District AO. And on March seventeen, nineteen eighty-seven, the property and portion of the property to the north and south were rezoned to General Business District C. The property to the east and portion to the south were rezoned to Residential Mobile Home District RMH on June seventeen, nineteen ninety-seven. Later, the east seventy-five feet of the west, three hundred thirty-five feet of the north, one hundred eighty feet of Lot three seventeen, a portion of the property to the north was rezoned to General Business District C. There have been no other zoning requests within the general vicinity of the subject property since that time. The property is generally designated for commercial and single-family use in the land use plan. The heavy commercial district is established to provide adequate space and site diversification for commercial establishments which would involve influences that would be objectionable in the other commercial districts or adjacent to residential districts. Included in this district are commercial uses that involve large volumes of traffic, traffic outside operations and storage of materials and equipment either for sale or as part of the business, excessive noise from heavy service operations, or any other possible blighting influences. This district is commercial in nature but has some aspects that are similar to industrial uses. The noise, traffic, litter, late night hours, outside storage of materials and equipment, and other possible blighting influences require adequate buffering. Thirty-one letters were mailed out to the surrounding property owners and a legal notice was published in the advance news journal. Staff received one call for information only. Development Services is recommending approval of the request to rezone from General Business District C and Residential Mobile Home District RMH to Heavy Commercial District HC as the property meets area requirements and has adequate ingress and egress. If approved, the owner must comply with all city ordinances and city department requirements. This item will go before the City Commission meeting of May third, twenty twenty-one at four P M. And we do have representation in the crowd.
Okay, does the applicant have any comments at this time?
No.
No? Okay. This item requires a public hearing. Is there anybody from the affected area signed up to speak on this item?
No one in the affected area, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, open up the floor. Open up the item to the floor, to board, board discussion. Questions?
No, Mr. Chairman.
None? I have one, that area that is not included in the entire, in the entire property, that's at the corner of Cage and East Thomas. What is that, something existing there?
Yes, sir, it is a auto zone.
Auto zone?
Or advanced, advanced auto parts, sorry.
I gotta get some bifocals one of these days. Okay, that's all I have. No other questions? Okay, we'll close the board discussion, open the floor for any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I move. Three, two, one.
All second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Item number five. Melton and Hunt Inc., representing Maria D. Valdez owner, has filed with the Planning and Zoning Commission a request for a change of zone from Neighborhood Commercial District NC to Residential Multi-Family District RMF in order to develop and construct duplexes. The subject site, which is located on the south side of West Sam Houston Avenue, has a physical address of two hundred and twenty-nine West Sam Houston Avenue. The property is legally described as being a point five three eight of a one acre out of lots one and two, Block one, the Van Williams subdivision, Far Idalgo County, Texas. The property fronts West Sam Houston Avenue, an eighty-foot major collector that runs east and west with a posted speed limit of thirty miles per hour or less as identified in the City of Far's Therafair Plan. The property is currently zoned Neighborhood Commercial District NC. On March thirtieth, nineteen eighty-two, the property and the property to the north, east, west, and south were rezoned to a single-family district, family residential district R one, when the city adopted the zoning ordinance we use today. On August second, twenty twenty-ten, a portion of the property was rezoned to Neighborhood Commercial District NC, and later, on August nineteen, twenty nineteen, the other portion was rezoned to Neighborhood Commercial District NC. A portion of the property to the north was rezoned to General Business District C on May fifteen, two thousand and seven, and the other portion to the north was rezoned to Residential Multi-Family High Density District RMF HD. There have been no other zoning requests within the vicinity of the subject property since that time. The property is generally designated for commercial use in the land use plan. The Residential Multi-Family District RMF is established to provide adequate space and site diversification for low-to-medium-density residential development where adequate streets and other community facilities are available for present and future needs. This district is established for duplex, fourplex development as low-to-medium-density use, and additional requirements for streets, water, and fire protection, wastewater, drainage, and adequate open space shall be met before zoning to such use. It is established to protect residential areas as far as possible against heavy traffic and zone promote, and zone to promote the most desirable use of land and direction of building development not in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan. Twenty-five letters were mailed out to the surrounding property owners and a legal notice was published in the advance news journal. Staff received no response to the letters or the legal notice. Development Services is recommending approval of the request to rezone from Neighborhood Commercial District NC to Residential Multi-Family District RMF as the property meets area requirements and has adequate ingress and egress. The property is not currently compatible with the future land use plan, however, the zoning will allow for reasonable use of the property and granting the request results in equal treatment of similarly situated properties. If approved, the owner must comply with all city ordinances and city department requirements. This item will go before the City Commission meeting of May third, twenty twenty-one at four P M. And we do have representation in the crowd.
Does the applicant have any comments at this time?
No, sir.
None? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. Is there anybody from the affected area signed up to speak on this item?
No one in the affected area, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, we close the public hearing. Open the item up to board discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I got a quick question. Go ahead. What is the frontage on Sam Houston for that one? For that property?
Sam Houston, it, it fronts Sam Houston.
Yeah.
How many?
Well, how many, lean your feet? How many, you know? Under two hundred? Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right, now, they, they will be looking at the fifteen feet off that corner, off of the Blue Bonnet. How much setback do you have? Sure, please, sir. And, and let me ask you just why, because I have a brother who lives on Sam Houston, and you have the most difficult time ever trying to get into the property. In and out. You don't want to exit, and the only way out is backing up into Sam Houston. I just want to make sure that, I mean, I've, I've been at that corner, and, you know, things get a little hairy because traffic's flying. And that's it, it gets regulated quite a bit by the police department, but still, you know, they're not there all the time. But we will be getting at least fifteen feet off that corner.
Yes, sir, so, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Mario Reyno with Melton Hunt for the record. So as part of this project, we'll have to do a re-subdivision. And the standard procedure in the City of Far is to do an exclusive City of Far easement around the perimeter of the property, or at least front of the public road, so at a minimum, it'll be fifteen. But I think the setback is going to be a little bit more, right, so? It'll be, was it half of the right-of-way? In, in access points, I don't, I don't think that this is a, a little sketch that the owner came up with, but it's not feasible. So we'll come back and do the subdivision and site plan, but?
There will be one entrance and one exit on the side road through Blue Bonnet, maybe?
I believe Blue Bonnet will be the main point of ingress egress.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
And exclude Sam Houston altogether?
It's a little tricky.
Yeah.
Ingress egress, so it'll be, my, my, my belief is it'll be along Blue Bonnet, yes, sir.
Yeah, because Blue Bonnet also is not really that wide of a street, and it really gets difficult when the neighbors down the road park their vehicles up front. And, I mean, it's, it's tough. But. All right, that's all I got.
Mr. Ramirez, yeah, so, on the proposed site plan, he does show entrances, ingress and egress out of Sam Houston as well.
Okay.
But we do have an ordinance in place that prohibits backing up onto streets. So these parking lot, the parking lots that is being proposed, they will be able to, to drive out into Sam Houston.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, because?
From the parking lot. It won't be like a regular driveway where you back out.
Yeah, because I'm keeping in mind with Miss Mata was, I mean, traffic is bad. You got one little intersection, and, and since the streets are not level, they're all offset, it just makes for a very precarious effort to get onto Sam Houston. Or if you're going from south to north, you know, you've got to do that little dogleg right there.
Right. And keep in mind that we're changing the zone from a commercial property, neighborhood commercial, to residential multifamily.
One step now.
Which residential multifamily is a more restrictive zone than the commercial zoning that it is right now.
All right, very well. All right, appreciate it.
Sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Madrigal? Do you have any?
Mr. Chairman.
We close the board discussion, open the floor for any motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Good evening, Commissioner, for the record, my name is Lerto Martinez, Planner Two for the City of Far. Tonight, we have three items before you for your recommendation. Item number one, on the plat approvals. Robles Engineering LLC, representing Maria Ruth Martinez owner, is requesting preliminary and final plat approval of the proposed Los Bujos subdivision. The property is legally described as being a zero point four, zero nine three of an acre out of Block B of the acreage addition to the Far Townside and out of Lot three, Block C, Kelly Forest subdivision, Far Idalgo County, Texas. The property is located within the three hundred block of West Egley Avenue. The property is currently zoned Residential Multi-Family District RMF. The adjacent zones are Residential Multi-Family High Density District RMF HD to the north and Residential Multi-Family District RMF to the east, south, and west. That property is designated for multifamily residential district use in the land use plan. Property proposed use, residential home, variances, non-requested. Development Services recommends preliminary and final plat approval of the proposed Los Bujos subdivision, subject to the following conditions said before you. Also, this item will go before the City Commission meeting of May the third, two thousand, uh, one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one, at four P M.
This item does not require a public hearing, so we'll open up the item to board discussion. Questions? I have a question, that, the little area just to the, I guess, to the west of the upper part of this property, is that a lot?
No, sir, it belongs to the irrigation district.
Irrigation?
Yes, sir.
They maintain it?
And the, the owners were able to buy just the portion north to the, to the current property. Yes, sir.
They're required to maintain it and all that?
Yes, sir, the irrigation district, they will maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Comments? None? Okay, we close the board discussion, open the floor for motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries. Just get to it real quick.
Okay, the next item. Applicant Melton Hunt, representing Edana Lee Lancar, manager for CDFP Developers LLC, a Texas limited liability company, is requesting preliminary plat approval of the proposed Modena Heights subdivision. The property is legally described as being a four point three seven six acres out of Lot one eighty-six, Kelly Forest subdivision, Far Idalgo County, Texas. The property is located within the eight hundred block of West Sam Houston Avenue. The property is currently zoned Residential Townhouse District, RTH. The adjacent zones are Office Professional District OP, Single Family Residential District R one, and General Business District C to the north. Office Professional District OP to the east, and Residential Multi-Family High Density District RMF HD to the south and west. The property is designated for commercial use in the land use plan. Property proposed use, townhouses, variances, non-requested. Development Service recommends preliminary plat approval of the proposed Modena Heights subdivision, subject to the following conditions said before you. For the record, we do have representation in the audience.
This item does not require a public hearing. So we'll go ahead and open up the item to board discussion. Questions? None? Okay, we close the board discussion, open the floor for motion. All second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries.
Last item. Melton Hunt Inc., representing Gilma Rivas owner, is requesting preliminary plat approval of the proposed Sugar Garden Village subdivision. The property is legally described as being a nine point six nine seven acre tract of land being the north half of the south half of Lot one nineteen, Kelly Forest subdivision, Far Idalgo County, Texas. The property is located within the thirty-eight hundred block of North Sugar Road. The property is currently zoned Residential Multi-Family District RMF. The adjacent zones are Residential Multi-Family High Density District RMF HD to the north and south. Single Family Residential District R one to the east, and Agricultural Open Space District AO to the west. The property is designated for single-family residence, residential use in the land use plan. Property proposed use, apartments, variances, non-requested. Development Services recommends preliminary plat approval of the proposed Sugar Garden Village subdivision, subject to the following conditions said before you. We also have representation in the audience.
Thank you. Item does not require a public hearing. Go ahead and open up the item to board discussion. Questions? I have one question. On the scale here, what is that white line on the north end, on north side, and the south side of this, this property? Is that a private road, or?
Where is that, sir, again?
The colored diagram, the last one in the packet?
Can you go back on that? The, the other covered parking.
Huh?
The roof of covered parking. The, the aerial?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are covered parking lot.
Oh, and the, and the?
And the adjacent property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, with the one on the northeast, there, where it has a cul-de-sac, and then it has a opening up to there, where does, where do they go from there?
Existing, should have put that road, looks like it's going to need to propose to continue. And, Laura. Is that right, Mr. Mario? Page ninety-nine of the packet.
Yes, sir, that, that way it shows on the plat, can we go back to the plat, Anna? Please. It's gonna, the roads are gonna continue on the back.
Take a minute to connect.
Any more discussion? Close the board discussion, open up the floor for motion.
I'll make a motion, Chairman. All second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, next item is announcements, another business?
No new business, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
On some of those, I know that we, we repaved eighty-three, right? It's like eighty-three. Who's responsible for those along the sidewalks, the, the widdy lots, the little widdy, a lot of grass, tall, and two, two feet, two, three feet all along? Is that the business responsibility, or the city? On the sidewalk? Like, where?
Along Business Eighty-three?
Yes.
Uh, if there's some business that's?
There's some businesses that have?
If there's a, if, if the sidewalk is in front of a business and there's grass within that area, it would be the responsibility of the business owner.
Do we send them letters, or?
Uh, yeah.
Because it's kind of, I mean, we're trying to clean the city, and it looks, you know, I've seen it along Business Eighty-three, along Cage. We need, I guess, unfortunately, a little bit long more, you know, because we haven't had that much rain. And for that to be at least two feet up like that, I mean, it looks?
We'll let, we'll let Code No and have them check that area.
I mean, the, the street, Business Eighty, it looks very nice, and for that to be like that?
Okay. For sure.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Only one item left, adjournment.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye, raise your right hand. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Not as good cars though, on the. But on the smaller streets, I mean, those are sometimes are okay. Okay, but now.
Those busy ones, okay.